So County Commissioner, you can think of it as, um, lack of a better term, you know, the executive branch of county government.
Hello and welcome to episode eighty-eight of Yellow Colored Glasses. Today we have Mark Guffey, who I've known like for a very long time through my dad. You and my dad used to go riding together. So I've kind of known you through there for a very long time. Um, and more recently, we've had a little bit more, like higher level conversations. So I'm excited to have you on. I'm excited for you to be here. I'm excited for you to share a little bit more about what you're doing. First and foremost, let's read a review. This review is from Maddie Kay. Maddie says Amanda was so amazing. She responded so quickly and was so helpful in getting the insurance that wasn't ridiculous, that wasn't ridiculous quickly. I canceled only because I went on my husband's policy when we got married, but would one hundred percent go back if I were looking again. So thank you to Maddie Kay. We hope to have you back at some point. Peaking a pit. So something that's going really well for me. We, um, are doing a, uh, a financial situation. And I don't want to get like too much into the details, but the financial thing required us to have an appraisal in the house. And the appraisal came back really, really good. So we're very excited about that. So that has kind of helped keep the ball moving on that. Um, what about you?
No, I say, I would say that, you know, the peak is, um, it has been an opportunity to meet so many people over this last year. It's just been amazing.
Yeah.
And you look at these people like, where have you been all my life, you know, some.
How do you normally keep them or keep them? How do you normally meet them?
Uh, it's used to do my campaign. Uh, I'm out, uh, all over the county. Yeah. So I get to meet all these new people, different organizations. Um, there's so many talented people out there. Uh, with awesome skills.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Meeting new people is always good. I mean, for business networking. You know, you have a, a, a mission right now. And so to get out there and put your face out there is and it's, and it sounds like people are taking to it.
Yes.
Like it's one thing if you're trying to get out there, but it sounds like people are responding well.
Sure.
So there's like a double positive there. Um, a pit, maybe something that's not going so well or a struggle. What am I struggling with right now? Hmm. This is a great problem to have. What am I struggling with? Um, I just bought a pair of pants that are way too big and now I have to return them, which is, that sucks. Um, that's all I got. That's all I got.
Maybe I should fall because I bought a pair of pants and they're too small.
Oh, you did. Oh, that would be actually very funny if you did.
No, I didn't. Um, no, I would say the experience of, of meeting and visiting with so many people, um, but there's even more that I haven't. And what I found, I think it's a struggle and it's really, I think it applies to all of us, is that it seems like in our world that there's a lot of apathy. That, that people, um, don't see the value of getting engaged and involved with, you know, volunteer organizations or um, you know, even in their local, you know, politics, um, to let their voices be heard. And that's always discouraging because, you know, that is, that is our avenue, uh, to, to make change. And, uh, to be involved in that change. So I'd say that's something that is consistent is, is just, um, um, there's just a lot of apathy and, um, I look at it as a challenge to try to encourage people. Um, and I understand, you know, that there's so many things that are divisive in our world, but it's what you choose to focus on. And that'll give you the why, you know, give you big, big enough why to, to pursue and to be involved.
Yeah, that's so true. There's a lot of distractions happening.
Yes.
You know, everywhere. So to get focused on one goal, one mission, one why. You know, that'll keep you, that'll keep your head down. Um, so I want to kind of jump into the bulk. I know I mentioned that we've known each other for a long time. Mostly in passing, we've had more intentional conversations recently. Um, but who are you? Where did you come from? I want to hear and I want the audience to hear a little bit more about you.
Okay. Um, well, I'm Mark Guffey.
Yes.
I am running to, um, to be your next, uh, South Commissioner for the county. Um, I am from, uh, this area. I've always lived here, uh, in Cass County. I've served on, um, you know, many, many boards, uh, planning and zoning, um, city council for several years. And then also as mayor, um, in Pleasant Hill. And, um, we, um, my wife and I moved to the country. And, uh, the next pursuit is for county commission.
Yes.
And, um, I still stay really involved. I'm on community betterment board. Um, and just tons of volunteer organizations, food organizations for, for different needy people within the, within the county. Uh, you know, people that just need some help, you know, so and we do a lot of fresh vegetables. So last year we gave away, um, forty-eight hundred pounds of tomatoes.
Oh my.
To food pantries, uh, within Cass County.
Wow. You might be a very good person for us to connect with around Christmas. So I'm always trying to like rack my brain on how we can give back to the community. Um, but we're working with a short period of time because normally we're doing like some sort of um, challenge or sometimes some, some sort of engagement like on social media. And like last year, for example, we took nominations for free turkeys. So you could nominate, yeah, you could nominate a family that you feel like could benefit from a free turkey and then we um, sent out free turkeys. But I feel like I'm always, I'm such a more, more, more person. So like now what can we do more next year, you know, and we've also, we've, um, put together dishes for Hope House. And dropped them off there. So that was really great too, but it would be good to connect with you to figure out something more.
Oh yeah, I could offer you many, many avenues.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's some incredible things that are going on. You know, one interesting thing about Pleasant Hill that people, um, you know, for this town, you know, is that we have had a lay clergy council, uh, for I think we're going on twenty-six years now. And what that means, there, there are twelve churches for the last twenty-six years have worked together for the food pantry, um, for emergency housing. And we think that we're the only one in the entire state of Missouri that actually has twelve churches working together um, on those efforts. Cause usually it's siloed.
Sure.
Usually, you know, the, you know, the Baptist.
Everyone's doing their own.
Yeah. And so we've got it together and which in turn, um, has an awesome consequence and that creates community.
Yeah, of course it does. Even with, I mean, I'm assuming not all of these churches maintain the same belief systems.
No, not totally.
But there's still a common goal.
Sure, absolutely.
So everyone's willing to set that aside and execute the common goal.
Right, you know.
Which is so cool.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's the why, you know, the why is serving other people, period.
Yeah, that's really cool. I did not know that. And I hope that's true. I hope that Cass County is the only uh, county that is, has twelve churches working together because that is incredible.
And, and that is within the city of Pleasant Hill. Uh, I know in Harrisonville and, and, uh, over in Peculiar and.
Oh, so this is just Pleasant Hill?
Yeah, Pleasant Hill.
Oh.
The city of Pleasant.
Wow, that almost makes it better.
Yeah, I guess it does.
Wow, okay, cause that's a much smaller, um, area. Wow, okay. I love that. Um, so are you, you're originally from here?
Yeah, I moved here in second grade.
Okay, so you've been here for a very long time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's awesome. Um, you and my, actually, so before the podcast started, Jake, my husband and Mark were out there talking. You've, you went to school with some of Jake's family members.
All of them.
My family members?
Yes.
So did you go to school with, um, like Jake's mom's side and dad's side?
Yes.
Wow, okay, that's cool.
Yes, yeah, both, knew, knew both of the families.
Wow, okay, cool, cool. I always knew that, um, you and my dad were friends, but I don't know that I ever knew that you went to school here.
Yeah.
And I kind of picked up on that. So exactly what is a Cass County Commissioner? For anybody that doesn't know, and you're definitely going to be educating me as well, what is the role of a Cass County or a, a county commissioner? Not necessarily Cass County, but just in general, what is a county commissioner?
So County Commissioner, you can think of it as, um, lack of a better term, you know, the executive branch of county government.
Okay.
In county government, um, all positions, um, you know, the recorder, uh, the assessor, um, the those type of positions are all elected. So the county commission, which is also elected, sets budget uh, for all county operations, including the sheriff's office. Um, road and bridge is a big one. And, uh, and, uh, you know, their day-to-day responsibility, planning and zoning, um, uh, building, building codes, uh, those type of, of things, uh, health department would be another one that falls in, uh, to that, you know, day-to-day direct uh, that doesn't have an elected, uh, person over those, those particular areas. And, um, yeah, so they, they set budget, um, which is really important, um, you know, part of, 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 of government in, in general. And, uh, maintaining a, um, um, a budget that's accountable uh, to, to the numbers, because it's tax dollars that are being spent and it's people's tax dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And so you need to be, um, cognizant of that. It's, it's not, it's not, uh, my money. It's other people's money, so.
Everybody else's money. What does that look like for the health? Like how is the county commissioner and the health department, like how do they relate and like how do, how does that work?
Well, the, the health department, um, has a director, of course, and they do the day-to-day, um, you know, operation of the health department. Um, the commissioners, which are three commissioners. So there is the, um, presiding commissioner, uh, which is elected by the entire county. Um, you have the north commissioner, which is, um, in the north district, which is basically Belton, uh, Raymore, and then the very north, north side of Pleasant Hill up on the county line east. And then you have the south commissioner, uh, which, which I'm running for.
Okay.
And, um, they, they, it's more of a policy, um, driven responsibility.
Having like a district to, to manage.
Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. Yeah, this is all new for me. I would not consider myself um, an expert in any type of like governing organization.
Right.
At all. Um, so this is all news for me. This is all we're learning together here. Um, so why, I know you said you ran for mayor. You were the mayor.
Was the mayor.
At one point. Why Cass County Commissioner?
Well, I have an innate need to serve people. I, I enjoy it. And, and, and it doesn't just have to be in an elected position. Um, it can be, you know, as a volunteer. I, I just love people. And, um, leadership, um, is an extremely, um, important part of that. And, you know, leadership is really these three things. To simplify it, it is getting people to pull the rope in the same direction. And not caring who gets the credit.
Yeah.
Always saying thank you. You know, those are the three big attributes of leadership.
I love that.
And I enjoy, um, bringing people together, um, that didn't know each other.
Yeah.
And just trying to be in a conduit.
Yeah.
Um, a conduit for good, uh, and, and to be responsible.
Yeah.
Taxpayer money, that's, um, you know, and I think, you know, especially, you know, when I was talking about the responsibility of taxpayer money, especially when you're elected, um, you know, we don't have to really deal with that in our volunteer roles.
Yeah.
And so, and I think that, um, I think that I've, I it's always, you have to look at your fruit, you know, I can sit, I can say I want to do anything or, you, but it's really looking at fruit. You know, what is the fruit, uh, that, that comes out of those efforts? And there's just been some amazing things, even through this election cycle.
Yeah.
Um, we, uh, back in May, it's a really neat story. In May, I had a cup of coffee with the superintendent of rapec schools. And just, just, just to get to know him, uh, Dr. Slagle. And during that conversation, he was telling me about the, uh, the lead center. It's learning, education and development center at the rapec schools. And so like, when I was in school, um, you, uh, would go to VOTAC, but you use elective hours to, to attend VOTAC and, uh, and, uh, and an array of different subject matters, you know, welding, you know, medical, you know, on and on. Well, the neat thing about the lead center is they apply core curriculum to HVAC work, to machining, to electrician, um, uh, folks who want to be an electrician. Uh, they have an entrepreneurial, uh, segment of that. And so they're applying core curriculum to those subject matters, which is different. Um, where when I was in school, it was all elective.
Yeah.
And I was just super impressed by that. Um, and a couple of weeks later, I went to a meeting with uh, heavy equipment, um, uh, operators here in Kansas City, uh, the people that do cranes, bulldozers and and backhoes, you know, all this.
Yeah.
So just back upers really quick. I've always, you know, looking at Governor Parsons, you know, whether a person likes Governor Parsons is irrelevant, but the one thing that he did, uh, that he started was workforce ready. And that's something I'm a huge proponent of. Not everybody is made to go to college. It's just simple that they're not. And so we have a huge workforce development issue in the trades. So I'm, I'm talking with, with these folks and, uh, they're like, you've got to be kidding me. I, I mean, I was telling them about this lead center and they go, well, we just, we just got a notification to partner with a school for heavy equipment operation. So this was just in last May. In August of this year, they've already opened up enrollment on the thirty acres behind the new rapec freshman center is going to be heavy equipment operation that kids can actually sign up for and learn how to drive and to operate all this heavy machinery, which gives them a clear path into, um, employment.
Yeah.
And it's great for the heavy equipment folks because they are getting, um, um, you know, vetted students
Yeah.
who've shown their, um, uh, their abilities.
Yeah.
And so it just puts them on a, a fast track to get into, um, um, uh, in, into good employment.
Yeah.
And because the one thing that I, that I've known, uh, um, that, that I know is true is that um, people who are secure, um, in their jobs, um, secure in their retirement, nowadays healthcare, um, um, in their homes, make excellent citizens. And there's another number that's really interesting. So people who go into the trades are more likely to stay in the community that they were raised in compared to ones that go to college. I think the number is, uh, it's like eighty-seven percent
Wow.
of the people who attend college leave the community they were raised in and, and go somewhere for their job.
Yeah.
And so attracting these people into the trades, uh, which is needed. Um, we are short. We've, we've got to push people and let them know these opportunities.
Yeah.
But the good news is they most likely stay in the community they were raised in, which gives us what you and I just talked about, knowing your entire family, uh, knowing Jake's family.
Yeah.
It's that sense of community, that, that root.
Yeah.
That root.
Yeah.
And, uh, and i- it's good for all of us.
Yeah, yeah. I think we have maybe a different angle on, um, like college and not everyone has to or need to go to college. I think we have a different angle, but we see the same thing. Um, no, not everybody needs to go to college. Not everybody, like that's not the only way. And just because you don't go to college, that doesn't make you more or less successful than, or more or less smart.
Sure.
Than the person to your right and left. I think that we all have strengths and it makes the most sense for us to capitalize on those strengths. Forget all weaknesses. Like we can just leave those in the dust, you know, like let's just capitalize on what we're really, really good at
Sure.
and make a living on it. Um, so I really love that. I love your perspective on it. And so with this heavy machinery and you said rapec, are they, are they the same school that's, um, doing the curriculum embedded in the?
Yes.
VOTAC?
Yeah.
How are they doing that? Do you know?
Well, you know, I think it was a vision of, uh, superintendent, uh, in the school board and staff. That, you know, the message of workforce ready, um, it is real. It's not some pie in the sky hope. It is real. We need electricians. We need plumbers. We need welders. We need heavy equipment operators. We need that. Those jobs are there. And, you know, back when I was in school, um, you know, college was kind of it.
Yeah.
Better military.
Yeah.
And, um, so they're applying also passion to this too. You know, they're just as passionate, uh, about a a person going into the trades as they are about someone going to Mizzou or, or, you know, wherever.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, for these folks too that are going into the trades, um, they're not incurring debt. That's another big thing, you know, that they're not going to have to carry, you know, once they, um, finish their training is to have, uh, an exorbitant amount of debt, you know, behind their educational experience. So there's, there's a lot of wind.
Um, one of, so I don't know if you've met the owner of Brick and Mirth, Jennifer?
Yes, no, we're very well.
Yes, her son, I think it's, yeah, her son, um, he's a music producer. He's not very old. I mean, he may even still be in high school. I can't remember how old he is, but he's built, I mean, a substantial, I almost want to call it a career in producing music and he, I think he's just all self-taught, like he's taught himself everything. And I think he makes a, a good living on it. And he's taught himself everything. So I, I love that, you know, for you and your perspective, college is not the only answer.
Yeah.
And your message isn't pushing people in that direction. I don't know that we really, really should be pushing people in any direction. Just kind of like let people figure out themselves and whatever that means for them.
Yeah, you know, I, I think to your point, um, is that, you know, we all have different talents, skills and abilities.
Yes.
And we weren't made the same.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, we just weren't. And that, I think it takes, you know, people, you know, like us, um, who are, who are living life to be able to step in and, and, and help these, because I mean, some of these kids, they have no idea. Um, there's, everything's just like in this balance, you know, they're sitting on the scale. And I think people like us can mentor and to help them and encourage them in areas that they're good at.
Yeah.
And, um, I think that's where our role comes in, is to encourage these kids.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, to pursue, you know, what they're, what they're good at.
Yeah.
And, um, and to make them, you know, citizens.
Yeah, yeah. One of our, whenever we fabricated the business plan for Warren and Mount's agency, one of the, I think it was between like five and ten year goals that we had was, um, to offer a scholarship for a Pleasant Hill High School student. And essentially what would happen is they would present us with a business plan. And then, you know, whoever comes up with the idea that is in most alignment with us, um, we would basically invest in that student and their idea, their business concept. And then, yeah, it would just kind of go.
That's fantastic. Well, just this morning, right before I came here, um, I was on a, a community betterment board meeting. And, um, we gave out, um, three very healthy scholarships. And, um, what was neat about that, going back to this workforce ready, and I'm not saying it was just my idea, but I brought it up several months ago, is that we need to, traditionally they've given scholarships for college.
Yes.
And so this year, we did one for the trades. We had one held out, you know, specifically for the trades.
Yeah.
Just so this, this morning, we.
Oh, that's funny.
Those scholarships.
I just said that. That's funny. So you probably never heard, I think we've meant, you've probably never heard any of us say that then.
No.
Okay, we, we, we mentioned it on the podcast, but I mean, the likelihood of you
Yeah.
hearing that is slim. So anyway, um, that's pretty cool. It's ironic.
It is ironic.
Um, so you were mayor.
Yes.
And specifically you were COVID mayor.
Yes, I was the mayor during COVID.
Yes, so what did you learn from being the mayor during COVID?
Well, a lot. Um, one thing I, I think about frequently is, you know, going back, you know, I was, I was a police officer uh, for several years and I was a teacher, um, at the, uh, National Police Academy at, uh, UCM. And one of the things that I taught was constitutional law, um, as it relates to law enforcement. I taught some other subjects as well. But I go back and I look at mayor, you know, as being the mayor in Pleasant Hill, I think we were eighty-seven hundred people. Um, who would have ever thought, um, that our local leadership, not just here, but everywhere.
Yeah.
Would be faced with major constitutional issues.
Yeah.
As related to anomalies. I mean, who would have ever thought that?
Yeah.
And I look back, I'm going, I'm so fortunate to have had that background. And it really helped me through that, it really helped me through conversations, you know, with other folks.
Yeah.
Uh, about that. And, um, yeah, it was, it was a very interesting time, a lot of stress.
Yeah.
A lot of meetings.
I'm sure there was a lot of pressure to know the answers, to have the answers, I can imagine.
Yes, it, it was and, um, you would have, um, there was, you know, somewhat, I guess there was three sides, uh, to this. There were people who, um, um, uh, were, were very nervous and
Yes, yeah.
About it.
Yeah.
You know, some people in the town middle are somewhat indifferent. Um, then you have the, the other side that, um, uh, saw a danger. And I would use that word danger. There was, uh, so you're getting all these different perspectives. One of the things I'll, is I looked at it, you know, I didn't know what I didn't know, but what I did see frequently is people's minds, the information that was coming out was being changed daily.
Yeah.
And I go, Mike, the leadership, I go, I will not subject the citizens of Pleasant Hill to the chaos of the different information that's changing every day. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask.
Yeah.
Then we got to wear two masks. I mean, it was crazy.
Yeah.
And there's just no way I was going to do that. So, um, and when I say I, um, the, just because I'm the mayor, um, I still operate, um, still my responsibility to operate within the context of this, the entire city council.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, it's back that old saying, you know, no man is an island.
Yeah.
So you have to work. And so we, we, we had a lot of discussions on that, but Pleasant Hill was open. You could do whatever you wanted to. Uh, we opened our swimming pool. We had all sports. Um, and that is the avenue that we took and we didn't take it to be irresponsible. Um, but we were responsible for what we knew today.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, my, my thing is, uh, I wasn't going to intentionally bankrupt small business on the sake of someone else's, um, changing information all the time. There's no way I was going to do that.
No.
And so Cass County, um, as a whole, uh, we set an all-time sales tax revenue record uh, in the height of COVID, uh, by fourteen and a half.
Sure, all the surrounding counties are like, how? Question mark.
They came here, um, um, I don't think you could have fit another person in the Mexican restaurant. It was crazy.
Yeah.
And, and so what we showed though, um, by our, our overall approach was, um, our rates of infection did not go up, um, actually we stayed a little bit ticked less than up in Jackson County that was locked down. And, um, but yet we raised our, um, our all-time revenue record of fourteen and a half percent. Pleasant Hill had four restaurants that expanded their square footage, um, in the height of COVID.
Gosh.
Fifth new one come in.
Yes.
And, um, And um, you know, um all of the goods and things that we sold. And what was really interesting is I would, I would talk to these business owners, I'd go, you know, when this is over um our challenge is gonna be able to retain that, that business. And I've talked to many of them and they said, yeah, it's still, it's still, um we, we captured customers that still come here.
I don't know that it's ever gonna be over.
Yeah.
Because like, you know how two thousand eight happened?
Yes.
Like those, those stories and those conversations they live on today. You know, oh, you know, back when the market crashed in oh eight, like that's gonna be the conversation ten years. You know, back in COVID, when that happened. But I love that, I love that everything stayed open. I know how how impactful and um the positive, the positivity that came from that, um from a feedback.
Sure.
From the conversations that I had. And I think it ultimately leaves everyone up to their own choice. If they feel safest, if there are, if they do feel danger, you know, stay in your in your home. And if you feel comfortable enough to be out and about, then be out and about.
Yeah, sure. And I think to your point though, you know, it, it's really risk management. And, and I use this analogy and I still use it. Um some people choose to um ride a motorcycle with a helmet. Others choose not to ride a mo- to ride a motorcycle without a helmet. Um you have some families that let their kids play football. Other families view it as, it's too much of a risk. And so we do this risk management all the times in our lives. And you know, my, and my overall point was this. Um just because a restaurant was open, doesn't mean you have to go.
Absolutely.
And, and I think that was, that putting it on the, the individuals being responsible for their, for their own livelihoods and their own health.
And just because a restaurant is open and a no mask is required, doesn't mean you can't go in and opt to wear one.
Absolutely.
If that's what you feel safest doing, that is absolutely what you should do. So I love that. I'm sure that was um stressful times. From all the pressure and not, and not having, no one had ever encountered anything like that before. So I think even just as um a citizen, I was into dental hygiene at the time. And just the, the unknown and all the information that was coming out. It was just, it was a lot. It was a lot. And everybody was stressed out.
Sure.
And it was, I mean, a lot of it, I think, was kind of created within ourselves, you know? Um and of course, there's, you know, staying healthy is something to be uh fear, you know, fearful of. But something to be conscious of.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um but anyway.
Yeah, you know, and I look back, you know, um you know, I'll, I'll have um uh opponents in this, in, in, in this election. And um, you know, uh none of my opponents have ever served, you know, in, in, in that kind of a capacity. And I hope that um what it does show that my, that my heart, and I'm not even saying that COVID wasn't real. I'm not saying that.
No, of course not.
But, but what I am saying is that um leadership has to always look at the, at, at the whole of people. And that the one thing that I know is the um best judge of, of um activity is the person themselves.
Yes.
Not me as in the government.
And you gave everybody the autonomy. And that, that's what we all value realistically, our freedom and that's why we live here.
Absolutely.
And the autonomy to make decisions for ourselves and to not have something thrust it onto us. So I love that you were able to navigate that in the best way possible. And I feel like the majority, there's gonna be some people that didn't appreciate that. And that's okay. You're, everybody's entitled to their perspective. Um but yeah, I'm, kudos to you for, I'm sure everybody, I, I know for me. I guess I can't speak for everybody else. I know, I greatly appreciated that. Um so I can't remember if I mentioned it before, but me and Mark had um a call before we did the podcast. So I could get kind of an idea on the things that were most important to him on what he wanted to speak on. And one of the things that we talked about was the growth of Cass County and the direction. So I kind of wanted you to speak on that a little bit.
Yeah, so Cass County is a class one county now, um in, in uh, uh class eight county. And what that means is, look at Jackson County, you know, they're, they're class one county. St. Louis County um is a class one. And there's several just because of the growth in Missouri. But so anyway, Cass County is, is a um, a class, uh, class one county. And then uh on that too, Cass County is a number two in the entire state in growth. And that's, that's a big number. And we're sitting somewhere at number six to eight in building growth. I mean, you know, whether that be residential or commercial. So Cass County, you know, even back when uh you're, you're several years younger than I am, but even back when you were in school, there's been tremendous change in our county. People see a value here. They're moving here.
Yes.
And there's a reason why they're moving here. And um with this growth, that's, you know, going back to uh having a sense, you know, to keep that sense of community, uh the volunteerism. That just means more people are coming in here to be a part of our community and to volunteer. That's, that's the numbers that I look at. And then how do we engage those people? But, but with that, there's, there's also twelve hundred miles of just county roads. That doesn't include the municipalities that have their roads. So outside of the municipalities, we have twelve hundred miles of roads. Well, we're seeing, we'll use Huback Hill as an example. When I was in school, that was a gravel road. It went between here and Ramon. Um that became an improved road. And now if you go out and look at Huback Hill, um it is paved, striped, you know, uh just like, you know, uh other roads, you know, that you see, you know, like I'm in Lee Summon or whatever. And, and what's doing that is we're getting pressure. We're getting uh collector roads that are being formed just by cause of all the development that's going on. So it's, it's putting pressure on, on our road system. And then you look in that falls directly into the responsibility of the county commission. That is one of their their probably the biggest day to day is roads and bridges.
Yeah.
And so you're looking at these pressures. Um and then how, how do you get a plan going forward to to give it the attention, you know, that, that it needs because of the growth. And it's really, you know, keeping your good roads good, making your bad roads better.
Yeah.
And working forward from that. Um and so there, that, that's a, that's, that's a big one. Um just because you're looking at the growth, you're looking at new pressures that didn't exist before.
Yeah.
I mean, we're seeing um, um, uh developments happening down in I think there's two developments going on right now down in Archie.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's amazing when you start seeing.
I haven't been out to Archie in a while.
Yeah, it's a neat town.
It is.
Yeah.
Small. So uh commercial developments?
Um residential.
Residential? Oh, nice. That's amazing. Um you spouted off some numbers when we had that phone call. We're like number four in Missouri?
Is for.
Is that right? Did I remember that right?
Uh number two in growth.
Number two.
Number two.
That's crazy. That's crazy. I put, sorry, don't listen to me. I put us down two more. Um that's insane. That's insane. After we got off the phone call, I actually told Jake that, cause I thought that was, that was just crazy.
Well, sure. And you is, and look at that opportunity.
Yes.
You know, it's not the the, the opportunity is not for the government. That is down, um that's off to the side. The opportunity is for small business.
Yeah.
And how do we capture these people?
Yes.
Because small business is what makes the world go around. It's just the truth. They are the people um who um sponsor softball teams.
Yeah.
Football teams.
Yeah.
Volleyball, you know, on and on and on. It's not Walmart. Walmart doesn't sponsor teams.
No.
And, and you look at that, and again, it gets to go back to that community. And then if we can figure out ways to get out of the way, as the government to get out of the way and just start leveraging uh, uh our small business to reach these new people to come in, cause they don't know. They don't know, they, they just moved here. They, they don't know who everybody is or, or who does what necessarily. And so it's, it's important that we pave a way um, uh for, for small business to capture um, uh the new folks moving into our communities.
Yeah, I love that. I love that. So we are, we do have a substantial amount of growth happening. With that being said, what are your goals for Cass County?
Uh the, the number one goal is um responsible government, responsible spending. Um and what has happened um through time, it's like this big gorilla. It's just, it's just, it's just been walking down the road and it's been walking down the road for a, a long time. And it just keeps growing and it becomes normal. You know, an example would be um heck back before you were born. Um back in, you know, seventy nine-ish, um uh the federal government um said, hey, lower your speed limits down to fifty-five miles an hour. And um, and if you do that, then we'll give you money for your, your roads. And uh so I used to be a grant writer. And what I had found as being a grant writer is that, sure, there, there's, there's federal monies, you know, that are out there that you can get. But so often there's um, there's attachments to that. There's behavioral um expectations on behalf of the government if you take their money.
Oh, sure.
And you see that happen all the time. Um and uh, you know, as a former grant writer um, you know, uh probably eighty percent probably aren't worth pursuing because of the requirements that come on the back end.
Oh, yeah. Again, risk assessment.
Yes.
You've gotta meet these standards and you're given.
Right.
This much. Does that make sense?
Right. But the exception to that.
Okay.
Is looking at grants that are from local business. It happens all the time. There, there are organizations to get together or um, or maybe just one company. Um uh you see that uh on the, in the support of law enforcement. You'll see, you know, maybe an Optimus Club or whatever club um will help fund, you know, equip, you know, some equipment. You know, some things like that, which are grants.
Yeah.
In essence. And um those are serving the purpose of the need rather than the purpose of, now I got you, cause you're taking my money, you know, and, and there's a difference. So local grants, uh gosh, I can't ever think of one that had any stipulation to it and it served that purpose. And there's a lot of opportunity locally.
How do you come across those?
Um a lot in spending time to talking with people.
Sure.
Um staying engaged in people's lives, uh organizations. So I'm really big in volunteerism. So that is, that volunteerism is what makes the world go around. It's just the truth. And um if you stay engaged with those, you'll be able to hear different opportunities. Um just like, you know, connecting to people that didn't know each other for the heavy equipment. I mean, that was really my role.
Yeah.
I didn't, I'm not the one, uh you know, uh maintaining or setting a budget for that program, but I just happened just because of visiting with two different people.
Yeah.
I just brought them together for a common goal and, and, and they solved the problem and, and away we go.
Yeah.
And um so um, so getting back to your question on on, you know, what I think are, are my goals, i- if, if I can become uh the Cass County's South Commissioner is uh responsible budgeting. And um in so many cases, you can go back to zero-based budgeting, um year after year and build your budget from zero, rather than just building it on what was last year. And there are always opportunities to do that. Sometimes it takes a little bit more work to, to, to do that, but it's worth it at the end. Um but so, yeah, so many people, um organizations, and I've seen this, um, uh you know, many times. They just base off last year's budget and they build from that, rather than zero.
Yeah.
Um based budgeting.
Yeah, interesting. Um.
And I think, you know, the other thing that I have a huge passion for, uh what I've found just in campaigning over this last, uh a little over a year, is that people tend to live in silos. And when I talk about silos, I'm talking about municipalities, uh you know, um, uh Ramors and their silo. And everybody's tried to, is trying to invent their own wheel.
Yeah.
And uh what I see is a valuable role of a commissioner is to break down some of these silos. And really get it in, and I can't just sit at a desk and wait for my phone to ring. I have, it's my responsibility to go out to these people, be involved in their chambers. Um in their, in, in business meetings, uh volunteer organizations. And you learn so much. And so like one thing, um that can be a benefit to, uh you know, multiple municipalities throughout Cass County is a cooperative bidding. So cooperative bidding is, so let's just say that um Pleasant Hill does four miles of roads a year. And then Peculiar does two, and say Harrisonville does eight. Well, instead of Pleasant Hill going to, to find their contractor and Peculiar going to find their contractor and Harrisonville going to find their contractor, we get together and say, we, now we don't just have four miles. We have seventeen miles of roads in these different communities, adding them together, going to a contractor. Getting that bid on seventeen miles rather than four.
Yeah.
And you end up saving money.
Yeah.
In the long run. Now, some cities are already doing that.
Sure.
But I see even more of a benefit, uh maybe even uh, you know, within the county themselves. Uh sort of county government getting involved, uh is, is a possibility.
Sounds like neighbors going in and haves he's on a fence.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That makes sense though. And it just takes, I think, the governing parties connecting and figuring that out and being willing to work with each other.
Sure.
So that way, ultimately it's beneficial for everybody. If you can save money there, that means you're putting that money towards something else. Feeling another no, uh void or need.
Sure. You know, and some people are gonna say no.
Oh, yeah, of course.
They're going, they're going to say.
They won't see the value in it.
Um but the, the important part is giving them the opportunity.
Yeah.
And so it's just like with this election. Um and I've learned this years ago. If I get caught up in the end result on August sixth, if I just continually focus on August sixth as the, is the election day. Um there's a chance I can come out disappointed. But if I fall in love with the process.
Yeah.
Between today and August sixth, um that is the important part, is loving that process, not getting caught up in the end result.
Absolutely.
It's presenting people with opportunity.
Yes, and I think whenever we do things like that, we're more likely to learn lessons. Because if your outcome isn't your ideal, that's okay. You learned so many things. You met so many incredible people and you can apply all of that to the next go around or the next thing that you're, you're after.
Absolutely.
So I really try to apply that in literally every area of my life. Much easier said than done sometimes, of course.
Yeah.
But just learning lessons and enjoying the day as it is and executing your day and then on to the next.
Absolutely.
And then the outcome is going to be the outcome. Can't control it. So technical difficulty, I had needed to change out the battery on one of our cameras here. So before I left the room, I asked Mark to come up with just a couple more things that he thinks is important.
Yeah, you know, again, you know, when it comes on the campaign trail, um and you know, even with the, uh, you know, the opponents that I face. What I try to get people to realize and to consider and to really think about is that especially with all the different pressures, you know, tax pressures, um just societal pressures that are going on. You need someone um, uh that is proven, that has lived in the fire. Um and not just for one period of time, but for many years.
Yeah.
And um, and not just even on the elected side, you know. The elected side is very important because they have a good understanding of, you know, state statutes, you know, things that you can do, that you can't do. They already have that working knowledge. Um you know, like in my case, you know, uh none of my opponents have, have that working knowledge at all. Um and uh so I think that's an important thing. Um and then if, if, if COVID in itself didn't prove the point that local leadership is essential, because not Because not fifteen miles from here, it was a different. World. Completely different world and that wasn't done by the president, that wasn't done by. Um the Missouri senate or the Missouri representatives, that was done through local leadership.
Okay, can I insert something here that may be slightly bad, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I went to Lee Summit one time uh to drop off a package. And the energy in that room was so chaotic because everybody was mortified. That was the, that was the standard that was set by leadership because everybody was scared. Shitless. To be frank.
And you know, and we can't live our lives that way.
No, we can't.
We have to live our lives um through risk management and 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 being as practical as we can, you know, I always give this. This analogy, people make bad decisions in two instances in our life. Um once one one they're drunk and the other one is when they're scared. And um and we are not created to to be scared. We are created to thrive. And to pursue. Not that we should put blinders on at all. You know, if I got on a motorcycle, I would probably wear a helmet. You know, that's that's me. So yeah, it's 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 that balance and um and we cannot live a life in fear. It's just, um it's not healthy. And it creates a lot of problems in the long run. I would say, you know, it the the second thing is um. Really just building on what I said is is local leadership i- is vital in our lives. If you look at all the things that happen in your lives with your uh with with taxes, whether it be real estate, property tax. Uh local taxes, you know, whatever they are, that's where the majority of the taxes come in our lives is is local. And um and then it's not just about taxes, but just about the influence of life, your senses of community. That all happens locally. It's not the president, he doesn't do that. The president doesn't, you know, give new ball fields and you know, all these different things. That we use in our life, uh you know, whatever they are. And um and it's extremely important that uh uh leadership does not chase money. Just because it's there doesn't mean that it's good. For the community in the long run because so many stipulations. And I would say that the the last and probably the most important thing is is I would just encourage people to get involved. Because I'm telling you, in all the chaos that we live in, all the negativity that's out there. Your balance will be in serving other people. Period. It gives you a perspective, you know, I can sit around, I can look, you know, I can have my own little pity party all day long. But when I serve other people, it gives me perspective in my own life. Like, oh my gosh, now these people, they're they really have something to complain about. I have nothing to complain about. So it gives you perspective. And um and to fight through apathy, get involved. Um cause it it will enrich your life, it will. And sitting inside, you know, I think one of the first little worst inventions in society um. Was the the number one would be the garage door opener. There was a time in our lives where people would sit on the front porch and they would talk and kids would play with each other. And then here comes a garage door opener and now we just hit it, we drive in.
Oh my god, this is so me. This is me.
And we turn on the TV.
Yeah, not that part, but the garage door, yes.
You know what I mean? And and so we've, in so many ways, um a community's been, I'm not saying it's lost, cause it's not lost, but it's sure been challenged. And then technology um is is another part of that and it just kinda, it keeps people in that in that box of apathy. Uh of not wanting to get involved, not wanting to um engage and to join. There's so many great organizations for people to join and to learn. You learn so much. Uh through through those organizations and uh and and you're, and and with that, your vote counts. You know, and August sixth is a is a huge day in my life. It absolutely is a huge day in my life. But it's even a bigger um day uh for the people. And so get out and vote. And uh vote your conscience and get engaged.
Where can we vote?
Well, it's whatever precinct that you're in. Um so for one, make sure you're registered to vote and that's easy. You can do it online. You can go online, um uh Circuit Clerk's Office in Harrisville, or you can go down there, uh however you want to do it. And you can get registered and so that's the first thing. You gotta get registered to vote. And then through that, on your card that you will receive, it'll tell you what precinct and where you vote, where's your polling station. And then you can go from there.
Perfect, alright. Thank you so much for coming on and talking to us and sharing your perspective. And a little bit more about where this all came from. I think it's important for everybody to know.
Yeah, you know, I'm not saying this is because I'm talking to you. I said this to you on the phone and I don't have to say this, but. What you guys do here at Ornament is is a, I I think about it a lot. I mean, you guys are really engaged. You're not just engaged in the act of 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 selling a policy. You're really involved in the process and you do it in ways that I could never even imagine. I don't have the the talents and things that you guys have. And especially you, I mean, gosh, I mean, you're just really good at what you do and you're utilizing that for the benefits. You know, we all need to make a living, but uh the things that you're doing. Is is a is a great testament to what we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that. We really, we really want to. Give people an additional space to tell their story, to sell their product, to sell their service. Because again, small business, I mean, it's everything. It's the foundation of everything. And if I can expose, you know, the coffee shop down the street to an additional three hundred people, cool. You know, cool, that's awesome. Um so anyway, again, Mark, thank you so much for spending time with us today. We appreciate you and we will catch you guys on the next one.